We'll call the meeting to order for the Wacomiko County Council Legislative Session 2019-19 for September 17, 2019. Everybody ready? Those that would like to stand and join us for the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Amen. Amen. I am King of the Crown, and I will be done, honor of this is heaven, because this is the day of deliverance, the end of our trespasses, as we do with the trespasses against us, and lead us round to temptation, and to the worst sinners, of not as kingdom, and power, and glory. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I obtain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda for the items as listed on the agenda, open legislative and open work sessions.
Second.
Second. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, the approval of the consent agenda is complete. One item I would like to address before we do go formally into the legislative session, I would like to just indulge you for a second for me to make a few comments regarding the National Folk Festival from this past week. As you're aware, it was an extremely successful event for the city of Salisbury and of course by association for Wacomiko County. And it was an outstanding event, I think most of you in here probably did go, I know I did, and members of the council I saw there as well. I'd like to extend our congratulations and our appreciation to Mayor Day and the city of Salisbury and their staff, as well as many individuals, organizations, the companies who assisted in making this a very remarkable event a true reality. We have invited, as a council, we are inviting the mayor, the city council, and all parties involved to our next, to our second meeting in October, so that we can personally express our gratitude as a council. On a more somber note, I'd also like to take a few minutes to address a second festival-related matter, which has unfortunately created a substantial amount of controversy between our county executive and our state comptroller, Peter Francho. Apparently, Mr. Culver felt that the state comptroller's office had inappropriately issued permits to allow for the sale of beer and wine at the National Folk Festival, and as a result, two weeks prior to the festival, he took it upon himself to write what the comptroller's office has characterized as a subversively clandestine letter to Senate President Mike Miller of the Maryland General Assembly, targeting comptroller Francho for what Mr. Culver claimed to be unlawful behavior. Mr. Culver did not copy this letter to any other parties, only after obtaining a copy did the comptroller then instruct Chief of Staff, Mr. Len Foxwell, to respond. In Mr. Foxwell's response, it was noted that Mr. Culver accused a state constitutional officer of illegal conduct, and in doing so sought to invalidate licenses that were essential to the successful operation of a major civic event within our own jurisdiction. Mr. Foxwell went on to state that it's been made quite evident in their search for what they called the elusive correspondence, that it was shared neither with the city of Salisbury, nor with the members of the Eastern Shore delegation, or the Maryland General Assembly. I would like to note, and this is my reason for bringing this to the attention of the public today, that the county council was also never informed of Mr. Culver's intentions, and was unaware of Mr. Culver's letter being issued until we received said letter from Mr. Foxwell's correspondence. The council, as the county's governing body, would like to publicly inform comptroller Francho, Senator Miller, the mayor, and the city of Salisbury, and our Eastern Shore delegation, as well as any other affected parties, that Mr. Culver was acting without council's request, without council's knowledge or consent, and ask that this conduct be attributed to him as an individual, and not to Wacomiko County as a whole. A letter has been prepared for this purpose, for consideration by council in open work session later in our meeting today. Mr. Foxwell's letter, as well as Mr. Culver's letter, are on the table by the door for anyone in the public that would be interested. Thank you very much for listening. Mrs. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item that we have on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 123, 2019, amending the Wacomiko County Water and Sewer Plan to amend Sewer Map 7 to show Tax Map Number 39, Parcel 33, and Parcel 542 being designated as served by Sewer S1, and to amend Water Map 7 to show Tax Map 39, Parcel 33, and Parcel 542 being designated as served by Water W1. The council had a work session on this request on August 20. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website, as well in the Daily Times, stating that a public hearing would be held this morning at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 123, 2019. If you have any comments that you would like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing for Resolution Number 123, 2019. I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution 123, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion with the Wacomiko County Board of Education.
Great.
We have several members from the Board of Education.
I see that, we always do. Glad to have everybody here, we appreciate you taking your time to be here.
And Mr. Hitchens is going to swap laptops, the one we have on the table is currently doing an update, so he's going to substitute, we're going to use his.
They don't seem to forewarn you anymore when they do the updates.
They do not.
You just open it up and you have an update. Forty-five minutes later, meeting's over. Did you all have the chance to go to the festival?
It was great.
It's good, wasn't it? It was really fascinating.
I'll just add to your positive comments, President Cannon, that not only was it positive for the community, but it was a great opportunity for some of our students, because 10 of the performers were in our schools on Friday, and performed, I believe, 18 different, so some were there in the morning and in the afternoon, and I had the opportunity to be there for a couple of them, and they were, the students were up and engaged with them, dancing and singing, and it was great. It was really great, so.
I'd be reminded that I wasn't supposed to be in the kids' section, I was supposed to be everywhere else.
Was that right?
The kids' section was for children, but it looked like they were having a lot of fun. Actually, about to have a carnival sometime, I'll tell you that one, too. Okay, I think, okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Good dinner. Okay. Dr. Hannah, I'll let you begin as usual, thanks.
Good morning. I'm going to start by just making sure that we acknowledge all of our board members who are here. We have Mrs. Toni Laird Lewis, Mrs. Ann Sefowski, Mr. Michael Murray, Mr. John Palmer, and of course, we have Vice Chair Jeane Balone and Chair Don Fitzgerald.
Very good.
And a number of individuals from staff who will be participating in some of the different items. And so up here now, we have Mrs. Lysel Ashby, she's the Director of Planning and Construction, and Mr. Mike Stoffer is the Chief Finance and Operations Officer, and Dr. Briggs will be joining us.
Okay, could we move Mr. Taylor's mic down there, so that you, at least that's one that you could share, I think it'll stretch.
So, as we typically do, we pulled together a couple of items that we had, and this time mostly items that you had into an agenda that you have before you, and we'll go down those items and present information to you, and certainly answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're going to start with an update from Facilities, Services, Planning and Construction, Mrs. Ashby, and Mr. Stoffer, give you an update on Beaver Run, and Mardella, and any other items that you want to talk about.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, we're going to highlight recent construction documents that have been approved both by the School Building Commission, as well as the Board of Education, they are currently in the hands of the Department of General Services of the state. Everything that's grayed out are milestones that have already been met, well, we didn't gray out the last few, but the construction documents, as noted, were submitted to the state last week. Our goal is to get it out to bid within the next month, have a guaranteed maximum price come in for consideration by the School Building Commission, as well as the Board of Education, to execute that contract.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yes, thanks.
To try to get under construction by March 1st in 2020. Total site is 17.95 acres, I'm not going to read everything on here, you can see for yourselves. The new building is approximately 98,000 square feet, it'll be serving grades Y3 through second. There's 30 classrooms, as well as special education spaces, intervention and resource rooms. It is a Title I school, and it will also have a community wellness center, similar to what we have at Wacomiko Middle School and Wacomiko High School. Just briefly, you can see here dashed in red is the existing building, and the blue blob in the back is the proposed new building. Play spaces are highlighted in yellow, you'll see green dashed areas, those are the various stormwater management facilities that need to be spread out across the site. And then you're seeing the existing building is overlaid what will become the new bus loop and the new parking loop. Real quickly, kind of that turquoise area is the pre-KK classroom cluster, as well as the blue area, which is the first and second grade classroom cluster, and you'll see in the middle here, it gives flexibility in case they have a bubble in a particular grade level, they can adapt and still be close to their age group. The green area is the administration suite, right here at the main entrance, the yellow is the media center. Moving on is next the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and back here are the mechanical and electrical room spaces. Here's an exterior rendering highlighting some of the materials, they're typical to what we've done in the past, and what the School Building Commission supports as far as life cycle cost analysis, so metal wall panels, curtain walls, metal roof, stone veneer, that's speaking to the vernacular of the adjacent areas throughout that neighborhood. Here are some interior shots, this is the main entrance area with a two-sided display case, that's the media center to the right, fairly simplistic materials. This is inside the media center, so you're looking at the stacks, that's that high space you see coming in, with the circulation desk there to the right. Next, this is the cafeteria, you can see that we have like some fold-up doors for the kids to go in and out for their meals. Next is the gymnasium, those are colorful acoustical wall panels on the wall, nice open space. The building is designed, there's an operable partition between the gymnasium and the cafeteria, so that they can open it up for larger community and school-related events. It's a typical classroom. Our technology department has been looking into going to an interactive, interactive displays, a display screen versus short throw projectors. As you all are aware, technology changes very quickly, at this point in time, it's important that we make sure the connections are there at the wall, and we'll be able to accept whatever it is that meets the instructional needs when we get there. We just want to briefly overview phasing, since it is a little complicated, summer of 2022 will be very busy. This will be the initial start, which is, you'll see the purply-blue color, that is new construction areas, as well as the service road, while we will keep the existing building and parking in operation in that orange color. Once the new building is open, we will have to make temporary parking areas, which are both shown in purple, while we work on demolishing the existing building and trying to get that new bus loop completed for the opening of the 2022 school year. Then there'll be, into the fall of 2022, a brief portion where we'll have to construct the new parking and drop-off loop, so they'll be using that, still using that purple temporary parking area. And then basically, the final phase is everybody's in the building, all the site work is complete, and then we'll decide what we want to do, if we want to keep that temporary parking area or make it more permanent. I'm sure this is what most people care about the most, it is positive news. Overall, the total project cost has been reduced by $186,000, that's reflected in our upcoming fiscal year 2021 CIP. We also experienced a cost share split, last year we were told to submit it at what they thought the state would be, potentially reduced to 95 percent, it did not get reduced to 95 percent, it remained at 97 percent. So that means the request to the county is reduced by about $1.2 million, and increases to the state for 1.0. So overall, under budget, and some of those cost shifts have split more so to the state versus local. The other piece, we just wanted to briefly show you, because...
And that's just hard costs?
That was a total project cost. The bricks and mortars piece, the 97 percent is referring to what they deem to be eligible construction costs. So, oops, it automatically started.
That's good news?
Yes, it is. Although the market's pretty volatile, so we're anxious to get out on the street to see what bids we get back in. This is just an animation, this is approaching, so this is if Beaver Run is open and operational. This is an approach to the car rider loop. So you can see the drop-off canopy there. Playgrounds are off to the right. That's that media center space there at the main entrance where you see Beaver Run, this is approaching it from the bus loop side. And then we're going to make our way into the building, if any of you know Mr. Twilly, the principal, he's in this animation. We call it, not Where's Waldo, but Where's Kurt? Nobody's been able to recognize him, because he's actually in a suit right there. So this is the main entrance. That's that double-sided display case between the media center and the main entrance. This is within the media center. These renderings have come a long way, the people actually moving them now, which I thought was impressive. This is making our way further down the main corridor into the gymnasium. Off to the right is that operable partition we were talking about, that opens to the cafeteria, and then there's a small platform to the left. Then making our way into the cafeteria. Again, the operable partition on the left that opens to the gymnasium, and the serving lines to the right.
So you can't open the gymnasium, it's twice the size, I guess?
Correct.
That's great.
The, there was a lot of work put into the courtyards, Beaver Run enjoys the courtyard they have now. We've specifically designed them with the AE team, so that they can be used as instructional spaces. And then here's just an overall view of it. Any questions regarding Beaver Run?
Is the entire area fenced? After the school's done, the backside, the sides?
So there is an alternate to have everything fenced in, at a minimum, all of the playground spaces will be fenced.
So it would be no access, other than coming in from Route 346?
Correct.
Cafeteria, will they be cooking there, or do they import the food, as they do in some of the stores? Is it going to be a full cafeteria?
I'm not sure, oh, well, I mean, if it's satellite, I'll have to verify with food service if it's a satellite site or not.
So you don't know whether there's food service items in there to cook onsite?
We've designed it for what their needs are, I just don't happen to know what that is off the top of my head.
You let me know.
I will.
So...
When will the...
Yes, go ahead.
When will the solar panels be installed?
The what?
The solar panels.
For what, Beaver Run?
I thought I saw that on the initial...
The solar panels are existing, they belong to a neighbor, they're not ours.
Okay.
I get asked this a lot, too, and sometimes I just have to say I'm not sure. So everything is on track, I'm guessing as originally planned, and what we figured would be coming to fruition?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everything was aligned, I never really have asked that question, since there was a little bit of uncertainty a few months back. Just one question, it's not really relevant, I like what was up there, and I appreciate the fact that we are saving, appearing to obviously save money on this project. Back in like 2007, at a Mako meeting, some of the members of the General Assembly were working very hard towards an effort of creating like a cookie cutter type program.
Prototype design.
Yes. Is that happening at all in the state of Maryland, do you know?
To my knowledge, and there's been a lot of changes at the IAC, or Interagency Commission on public school construction, nothing has come down from them for a particular prototype design. I think that's because there's a lot of fluctuations between jurisdictions. For example, this is a Title I school, but if you're in Montgomery County, they may not have the Title I need, and those bring certain space requirements with them.
Okay.
And we hear this every time a school gets ready to be built, about local contractors, is there anything in the contract that says that so many local contracts have to be used? And I realize that we have to look out for the best price, too, but is there anything in the contract?
We don't have a specific goal requirement, we do have to meet specific requirements related to prevailing wage and minority business enterprise. What we do is, we work very diligently to break down the scope packages, so that it has the greatest amount of reach, so that we can potentially get smaller local contractors to participate on those projects. Our percentages have been really good, as far as local, as well as Eastern Shore regional percentages, and we always report those to the School Building Commission, once we have our lowest responsible bidders established.
Josh.
Yeah, two things, I always seem to run into individuals who continue to say that each, all of our schools, we're building new schools, one of the responses that they get is, oh, this is all being paid out of my tax dollars. Do you want to, is there anything you want to say directly to refute how Wacomiko taxpayers are not 100% fitting this bill?
Sure, I mean, if we want to go back and look at the actual number, so our cost share formula is currently at 97 percent, so that means the state will provide 97 percent of the eligible construction costs, which is a fairly large percentage. However, the local dollar does need to cover architectural and engineering fees, furniture fixtures and equipment. Depending on the building type, it could be anywhere from like a 70/30 or a 60/40 split, when it's all said and done, which is why we always like to speak in total project costs, so that local, as well as state, is aware what the big picture is, not just the construction costs. But if you analyze just the construction costs, it's a higher percentage basis from the state versus local.
Second question was, there's also a lot of windows in the renderings, which I think looks awesome, I love it, the more that you can get nature inside of classrooms, the better. But that also begs the question, of course, we live in the era where, you know, we're going to have gun violence for a long time, is anything you want to say on that, or anything anybody wants to say, as far as our security inside the building?
Right. During the design development phase, and I think we came to you probably last December, I believe, we brought the architects in, and they probably provided a very detailed assessment that they did. We find a lot from the design standpoint is, you want to have, like you notice when you're approaching the school, the front office can see everything that's coming in, so a lot of it's passive design elements, I mean, we have the typical things, like we have S2, which is access control at the main building entrance, we have cameras, we have electronic locks on the exterior doors. For the most part, having the transparency of being able to see things is a big benefit. It's also balancing, the state requires us to meet certain high-performance building requirements. For Beaver Run, we're actually taking the International Green Council approach, instead of the USGBC lead process, very similar, more of its prescriptive, versus taking, paying for those credits through the USGBC process. They require a certain amount of natural light, so schools really become a balancing act through many different type of mechanisms.
So, I know in some of the past schools we've constructed, they were certified gold or silver, is that...
The state requires, had previously required to meet a minimum of lead silver. The last two buildings have actually achieved gold, just because there's, you know, you can have some in the maybe column, and ours happened to flip into the gold category.
So where's this one?
This one is, will be IGCC versus lead, so IGCC is a code versus the lead program.
Okay. The other thing, I know when Bennett was, they got ready to tear down the old Bennett, there was a lot of complaints about some of the equipment that was sold was like new, has there been a study done to see what equipment and fixture, not fixtures necessarily, but furniture, can be used in the new school, or are you going to just get rid of everything in there?
Mr. Holloway, if you can speak into your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is everything going to be new, as far as the furniture and all that? Has there been a study done to see what can be used out of the old school in the new school?
So I can't speak directly to the Bennett one, I wasn't involved in that one, as far as what we're doing currently is, yes, we do assess all of the existing furniture fixtures and equipment. If it's, if they had received something new, say, within the last five years, we would likely salvage that and reuse it in the new building. If not, we would be purchasing those items.
Okay. Questions?
Sir?
Are we going to have school resource officers in the new Beaver Run?
We have school resource officers in all of our secondary schools, that are also assigned elementary schools, so they're responsible for those elementary schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a nice job, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mardella's, we've been doing a lot of work this past summer, as I noted earlier, there's been a lot of changes at the IAC, they are revamping the edspec process, how they calculate utilization, there are more changes coming down, be attending a meeting Thursday to hear some more. So we've been spending a lot of time over the summer getting our consultants, Phil Murray, with the new process, which was just approved towards the end of May, beginning of June. We have started an edspec process, that's the next step in order to support our planning approval request to the state, which will be going in as part of our FY 2021 CIP request to the state. We're utilizing, I believe it was 291,000 we had received at the end of fiscal year 2020 in pay-go funds to initiate that. So the team's gotten kicked off, there's good public, some community members involved on it, as well as teachers, administration, and our consultants, so we're working on that with the goal of getting that wrapped up in December.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else under planning and construction? They were very busy this summer, with lots and lots of things happening behind the scenes, really not behind the scenes, you could clearly see them. Probably the thing that stands out most in my mind are new secure vestibules in a number of our schools, so we're working towards that, and we appreciate the hard work of Mrs. Ashby and her team.
Thank you.
We are 100% air-conditioned now, right?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
All schools are air-conditioned. Check and verify.
I knew East Salisbury was the last that we were. Okay. The next item is community partnerships, I know the council likes to have an update on what we're doing within the community to partner, and is that your mic, I believe? Yes.
So just to kind of talk a little bit about community partnerships, and good morning to everyone, by the way, President Cannon, council members, thank you all for giving us this opportunity. We're currently looking at a public-private partnership as we explore our performing arts school, and the possibility of moving forward with that in the near future. We do have some discussions and meetings that are planned this fall, to see what the possibilities of doing something like that are. But also, we wanted to take a moment just to highlight the strong community partnerships that we all...
But also, we wanted to take a moment just to highlight, uh, the strong community partnerships that we already do have and the things that we're doing. So I wanted to just highlight a few of those. Our Purdue Foundation, um, is a strong partner with Wycomico County Public Schools, with both the mentoring project and some curriculum, um, competitions and incentives that we do in our schools. Also, the Lower Shore Work Alliance, um, is a partnership through the Royal Maryland Prosperity Investment Fund is also, as well as the Summer Youth Connection and Employment, uh, Program. Um, they were instrumental in helping us employ forty-five students this past summer in local areas and businesses and helping to fund, uh, some of that so that, um, they can provide the students with, um, career skills and training and also with helping, uh, to offset the costs of, um, the salary that would go to those students and to help local businesses as well. Also wanted to mention, um, the Rotary Club of Salisbury as well as Chop Tank Electric Cooperative. Uh, they've instituted funding for a program that we call Nothing But Net. Um, and that's an elementary school, uh, basketball program that involves a number of elementary schools. It puts together the opportunity for the boys and girls to play in competition, uh, with one another. Is also, it sets up field trips to our, um, Salisbury University and University of Maryland Eastern Shore so that students kind of get at a young age, they get a, a bigger picture of what the opportunities, um, are out there for them. And as well as the Wycomico County Health Department is something, um, that's partnered with us, uh, actually very recently. They've provided a coordinator to provide planning direction as well as implementation and support of education uh, for our students in substance misuse and abuse, uh, as well as the Wycomico County Goes Purple, uh, program that we're doing. That coordinator is helping that and that the Wycomico County Health Department has provided that person, that staff member to be able to come into our schools, uh, to do that work. So that's been a, a great addition as well. And just the Community Foundation, uh, as we know, is a strong supporter of our schools with academic field trips, um, after-school programs, um, and all county elementary school choir, uh, all county orchestra, as well as attendance incentives, a community garden, uh, that we're planning, uh, to put in at our Choices, uh, program. I think many of you were able to attend the Ron Clark presentation at the opening kickoff and you saw how dynamic that he was. Um, so, uh, Community Foundation is also providing some funding to help, um, institute some of those practices and programs, uh, that you find at his academy down in Georgia, right here, uh, in Salisbury as well, in some of our elementary schools.
Yeah, well, and Mike, I'd like to sort of give a shout out to the Wycomico Education Foundation that was instrumental in getting Mr. Clark to come. And then we had several businesses that helped sponsor that and as well as our Greater Salisbury Committee and Chamber of Commerce. They all, you know, we had a lot of community partners, uh, involved to make that work.
Yeah, thank you. And that was the last part of, uh, some of the groups, um, that I was, no, no, you're fine, that I was gonna mention, but, uh, maybe, uh, so, so. Mr. McCain was able to mention some of the ways that the Education Foundation supports us. The, the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce has been wonderful, the Greater Salisbury Committee as well. Uh, we want to thank them for all that they do, uh, for the many programs, um, and ways that they, uh, support us. I also want to mention, um, as Dr. Hanlon mentioned, the Folk Festival. That was, uh, a recent partnership between the, uh, the Folk Festival and the schools where we were able to provide, um, some students, uh, on their own time to be able to help, uh, the City of Salisbury set up for the festival as well as to work the festival. So that was a great opportunity for our students to be able to do that. And then, of course, we benefited from, uh, some of the performers coming in to, um, to do assemblies for our students during that week as well. And then lastly, the ACE Mentoring Program. So, um, local businesses, uh, related to architecture, construction and engineering, uh, firms come into our schools and do an ACE Mentoring Program to help, uh, get students, high school students interested in those areas of business. Uh, they do a great job of not only, um, getting that interest and, and, um, giving some of our students those types of skills, but they're also able to take some of our students and offer them summer internships and employment uh, to gain even more experience and knowledge. So we appreciate what they do as well. So just a, a few highlights, um, of some of the community partnerships that we, uh, that we do have and, and just our appreciation for what our local community is able to help do in the school system.
That's, uh, that's a lot of success.
It is, it is a lot. And I ju- I just thought of another one, Junior Achievement. Does so much in our schools with financial literacy and, um, career development. And many of us are attending their Inspire Breakfast, I believe, tomorrow morning. So, um, that's fresh on my mind.
I, I would like to point out that, uh, Mike Dunn with the Greater Salisbury Committee, Bill Chambers with the Salisbury Chamber of Commerce are here today. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate having you here. Thank you, Mike. And was there anything else? Any questions?
I have several. Um, it sounds like you have some great partnerships. I'm wondering what, what type of partnerships do you have for students who are college-bound?
Partnerships with students that are college-bound.
What kind of community partnerships do you have for students that are college-bound?
I would say that many of the partnerships that he's, that he shared impact all of our students, not just students. Did you have something in particular in mind?
No, I just, I mean, you had, there's, there's programs for those who are not college-bound. Um, what are you doing for those who are college-bound?
A great example of what I just mentioned is Junior Achievement. That's a great example.
For financial literacy?
Financial literacy, career development, entrepreneurship. Yes.
So those students will be attending Junior Achievement events, the college-bound students?
They're, I believe so. I can't tell you that off the top of my head. I didn't remember that being an agenda item. So we can certainly explore that further and report back to you.
That would be great.
But I can tell you that we are providing, um, supports. We have partnerships in our community that support all of our students. To, uh, Wy, Education Foundation is another great example. Even though Ron Clark came and spoke to staff, that impacts all of our teachers and all of our staff and the way that they interact with all of our students in the classroom. So.
And I think we're making efforts through Warwick Community College as well.
Absolutely.
With scholarship program for, uh, students to transfer to, or to, to move forward to Warwick Community College.
I have a high school student. I just wrote a check for tuition. So, no, it's not the case.
Just also to mention, um, I know Warwick, uh, has representatives in the audience here today, but a, a big one is dual enrollment. Um, obviously that, uh, we have a number of our students, um, over two hundred students, uh, a year that take as many as four hundred-plus courses through Warwick Community College and also Salisbury University in our dual enrollment program, um, and benefit from reduced, uh, tuition costs, uh, toward that. And also our, um, we have programs where students go over to Warwick Community Colleges and work with their staff as well as Salisbury University on, um, writing college essays. Um, the ACE Mentoring Project that I mentioned earlier provides scholarships to students that, uh, may be interested in exploring that field of study as they get into college. So those are just some of that, that we, I can think of off the top of my head. And we can certainly, um, make a list of other opportunities that we're offering our college-bound students and be able to forward that to you.
College Boot Camp, you may be familiar with that, that we're offering where we bring in partners from the community to assist students who are going through that process.
There are a lot of scholarship opportunities for all students and, um, a lot of programs. I think of something tomorrow night at Bennett for a scholar, well, not, well, something for college-bound students to, to prepare them.
Yep. They have, I believe they may be doing the FABSA, uh, presentation and that's coming up in all of our high schools this month.
And, and they start early.
Mr. Stalfer, can you just clarify what is the age or the grade in which they can dual enroll at Warwick?
So the criteria that they have, that's, um, agreed upon criteria on both the part of Wycomico County Public Schools and Warwick Community College and Salisbury University and UMS. Don't want to forget that they partner with us as well. Uh, the students need to be, um, sixteen years of age or older by the start of the course that they're enrolling in. Um, there are exceptions that Warwick Community College can make depending on, um, the scores that the students received in areas such as the PSAT or the, um, AP, um, coursework that they do. Um, but they are the ones that would make those exceptions. Um, the MOU asks that they be sixteen years of age or older.
So if there's a student in ninth grade that scores a five on an AP exam and they pass the entrance exam to Warwick, that would be considered dual enrollment?
Yes. We have had students that have gone, um, to Warwick and other, uh, local colleges through dual enrollment at ages that are earlier than sixteen in the past.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
So I believe there were also questions about grant funding that we received. Um, tried to get a little bit more specific in what your questions were. Um, so, and didn't, uh, got led to a, a link that was really all the grants that are available. So I asked Dr. Briggs if he would, um, report out on just generally what we receive in grant funding. I can tell you before I turn it over to him that the board will, can attest to the fact that we have, um, we are very successful in our endeavors with grants and monthly at board meetings, they receive a grants report and that can be found on our, um, website under Board Docs for each meeting. But Dr. Briggs, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, council. Um, first, let me say we greatly appreciate the generous funding by the council. But, um, we are continuously looking for additional funding, um, through the avenue of, uh, a variety of grants. And so just did a little historical for you. In FY sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, we had, we received approximately fourteen or fifteen million dollars, um, in grant funding. Um, and that's inclusive of about thirty federal grants. Obviously, I'm not gonna read you all thirty of them, but, um, the main ones being both Title I and IDEA. Um, also thirteen state grants, um, which would include like Judy Center and pre-K expansion. And then other non-governmental grants, some of those local ones like through the Community Foundation and Fuel Up to Play Sixty. So that was for FY sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Uh, last year, we actually, um, increased that to over seventeen and a half million dollars. Um, the main, um, contributor to that was the Striving Readers Grant, which was a federally funded, um, passed-through grant through MSDE um, to assist, um, in the, uh, literacy needs of our students. And this year, we're actually almo- almost to twenty-two million dollars. Um, and that additional money is, and thanks to the Kerwin funding, um, that came through. Um, and just how that relates to the overall budget, um, last year, um, the restricted expenses that includes those grants was about eight point three five percent of our total operating budget. And then this year, um, it would be about nine and a half percent of our total operating budget. It's, um, attributed to the grant funding. So.
So there were six new grants in two thousand and nineteen by MSDE. They're listed on their website under the six new grants. So that's what we're referring to as the grants that they were applied for.
Are you talking about the, um, blueprint? The Kerwin funding?
No. The six new grants.
So I would need to know specifically what grants you're talking about.
All right, let me Google it here. I'll go on their website. But aside from that, the Jarvis Grant, was that applied for?
So, no, we did look at the Jarvis Grant. The Jarvis Grant is for gifted and talented education and traditionally awarded to, uh, very large school district and research-based institutions, um, and for districts that don't have existing programs or in need. We're pretty proud to say that we're actually, um, we do have GT programs unlike many other, um, districts. Um, and we have universal screening, which was another, um, a key indicator for recipient, um, of the Jarvis Grant. MSDE did, obviously, um, and, and other universities like Syracuse, you know, uh, St. John's University and some other major institutions like that. Um, they were recipients of the Jarvis Grant this past year.
There were several in Maryland, also in the counties of Maryland, several small schools in Maryland received them. What, so you, so you feel that according to the new COMAR laws, we are fully funded with gifted and talented programs? We don't need any more additional funding?
Right now, we're meeting, with the resources that we currently have, we're meeting the needs of all of our gifted and talented students, yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to comment, just, just kudos to you for, you know, seeing that steady increase every year. I mean, that's, uh, you know, goes a long way to helping us where we sit, you know, from a funding mechanism. So, you know, it's greatly appreciated.
We have a grants writer who pays close attention to what is out there, works with our staff to write grants that are appropriate for us that would assist in accomplishing our goals. So.
I think anytime you invest in a grant writer, it's more than worth the effort and the, and the, and whatever the expense might be.
It's more than paid.
Sure.
So the next item was something that you would wanted to share with us, your conversation, your thoughts about the process for filling Board of Ed vacancies. I think you all have had a recent conversation about it. You wanted to share that with us.
I thought we would share that with you. Um, I, I think even, and, um, you know, when we get into a more in-depth conversation, I want, uh, Mr. Bromley to be here as well. Uh, to, to, I'm sure we can have a work session to include him. Uh, but we did want sort of your input. Um, we found that the process was somewhat convoluted. So many public hearings that were required, you know, an extensive commission of about fourteen, for, I don't know, fourteen to twenty individuals. Um, we just felt like the last process almost got so out of hand because, uh, there were so many moving parts. And, uh, you know, from an educational perspective, from any experience you might have, uh, you know, from other, from other areas, if you felt there may be, um, you know, any input that you'd like to give, is the best direction for us to, to head. And it's strictly open, however you.
I don't know if board members want to make any comments, but, um, I can, you know, my, from my experience in Washington County, there was never a situation that I recall, there may have been, but where, where there was a vacancy that needed to be filled. So that part of the process was new for me.
Sure.
And having come to the county after the legislation had already been written, um, we think we all experienced it together.
Right, right. Well, it's one of those things that in writing, we felt we had really locked everything down and it was really, I think, in place. But, uh, in, in, in actual reality of how it came about, there were, there were some, uh, some gaps and, and some missteps, of course, that we had, I think, that we will address to sort of make it a more efficient process. And I think the commission felt the same way. That we, we had a commission where in a lot of their meetings, they had trouble getting a quorum. We were trying to be as inclusive as possible in the entire community, but in doing so, we created almost an impossible task of trying to get a quorum together of almost too many individuals. So we feel like maybe we need to narrow that down some. So we just thought we'd give you the opportunity for any type of input you might have, um, off the top of your head, um, before we get into, I guess, serious discussions on it through work sessions.
Efficiency is good.
Yes. Yes. We, we made some good choices and we have some great additions. I think that's wonderful. But, um, the process was mainly what I was concerned about. That was a quick one? That was a quick one? Okay.
Pre-kindergarten initiatives. So the next couple of items, um, I was, uh, happy to have on the list, not that I wasn't happy to have all of them on the list, but these two, um, you know, speak to what we're trying to do specifically and imagine our strategic plans. So, um, we're, we're making great progress in both of those areas. And so, Dr. Briggs, would you like to talk specifically to pre-K?
Sure. Uh, just a little bit about update on numbers. Obviously, you know that we've been trying to expand the opportunity for four-year-olds throughout the entire district. And so just a little historical, back in two thousand and fourteen, we had approximately five hundred and seventy-five, um, four-year-olds in, um, pre-K. Um, and that was both in a large number of half-day and full-day programs. And we're proud to say that, um, as we, this morning's numbers, we currently have six hundred and eighty-six, um, four-year-olds enrolled in pre-K. And that's in thirty-five classrooms throughout, um, our elementary schools.
They're full-time?
Uh, thirty-two of those are full-time. Um, three classrooms are half-day. We have, um, a cla- one class, excuse me, one teacher, which is obviously then two classes, morning and afternoon at Northwestern Elementary. And we have two classrooms at Delmar Elementary. All of our other primary schools are full day now.
And the reason those programs are not full day has nothing to do with the desire by the school. It'll, it's all about space.
Okay.
Okay. Everyone would love to have full-day pre-kindergarten programs because we understand the benefit of those programs. But we're, we're working on that issue as well.
And the state needs to consider that as well, too.
Yes, they do.
The state is going full force with this. And of course, you're right. I, I was surprised. I hadn't thought of that.
Yeah, we've heard loud and clear from those pre-K teachers, including our Teacher of the Year, um, who is, um, pretty adamant that she needs them all day um, so that we can maximize the, the time on task and, and learning for them. So that's about it for pre-K.
Very good.
Are you using, I'm sorry, it's a question. Are you using medical assistance funds for your three, four? Are you using medical assistance funds for your three, four, and five-year-olds for pre-K?
Most of the pre, the, our Y threes, we have three Y threes, and I believe those are all funded through Judy Center, our Judy Center grants. We have two classes at Beaver Run and one class at Pemberton Elementary. I'm pretty sure on the funding source, but I can double-check that.
Thank you.
You also asked about the status of teacher vacancies, really kind of in light of the national teacher shortage. It's something that we are obviously very aware of and working hard with both Salisbury University and UMS to prepare students. I think I've talked to you about some of our internal projects that we've had or what we're doing internally. The Teacher Academy of Maryland, where we're training teachers early who have an interest in that profession. So we're trying to be proactive in that way, but specifically to teacher vacancies. We hired more teachers this year than we have for a while. A lot of that was because of the additional funding that we received, both through the county and through the Kerwin funding. We hired one hundred and twenty-six new teachers this year. It's typically just over one hundred. And about fifty percent of those are coming to us with experience. So a mix of experience coming to us. We did start the school year off with a few, and I say few because I tried to nail down that number and it continues to change, vacancies in classrooms. I know that we have, we continue to have, and in, in these situations, we have qualified substitutes while we, we sometimes reach a point where we're attempting to hire someone or we have a late resignation or a vacancy that comes up late. And as you can imagine, with the teacher shortage, school systems are out there recruiting teachers early. And it gets to a point where we would prefer to wait until December graduates or even, depending on what we have in the classroom, what we have available to, to fill the need, perhaps even the following year where we fill that with a qualified candidate. So we do have, I believe, right now, we have three special education, long-term substitutes who are filling positions for us. We have one English and two, well, we actually have one long-term sub in a math position. We have two vacancies, but one we anticipated because it was a new hire and we scheduled so that students weren't in a classroom with a substitute until we have an opportunity to hire someone for that vacancy. So it is a moving target, but our human resources and our supervisors and our school administrators work together to, to make sure that we are putting the most qualified people in front of our students.
Good. Yeah, I, do you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to make a comment. The, I know this past Saturday evening at the Y Common Cool Education event, you had spoken to the retention.
Yes.
Issue, and I know it's part of the strategic plan, it was to increase that retention percentage, and you had mentioned, actually, I think it's the best it's been in.
In a while, yes.
In a number of years.
You may, may recall from the state of the schools last year that we were, we started off several years ago with an average cohort, a three-year cohort of teachers, that's how we measure turnover rate, how many of them leave us within the first three years of teaching. This county was up to over twenty percent turnover rate over the course of three years. That percentage has declined now to closer to fourteen percent. And that's for a number of reasons. We, you know, we really work hard to support our teachers in the classroom the best we can and provide them with the professional development and other kinds of emotional supports that they need because it's a challenging job. So we have a new supervisor who, among other responsibilities, if you know Aaron Deal, he was our super, superintendent, he was Teacher of the Year a number of years ago and Maryland State Teacher of the Year. And he is now responsible for working with our new teachers, and he does an amazing job getting feedback from them already about how's, how's it going, what are your stressors, and sending that information to us so that we can address those issues. So we're, we're working hard at that.
I, I attended your breakfast for new teachers, welcoming new teachers. I know Bill Chambers spoke there, and it was a very good event. I think I relate to you. I was very surprised on the way in, someone was coming up behind me and I turned and it was a, a young woman, and I said, are you a new teacher? And she goes, oh, yeah, I'm a new, I'm a new teacher. And she was from Wilmington, Delaware, and her, her area of study was, or her area of teaching was for pre-K. So I thought, now, that's kind of, kind of ironic to run into the first person I run into. So it's nice to see things developing and, you know, tangible that you can see we're really making some success there.
Do you have, do you have teacher surveys that go out?
We survey face-to-face and electronically our new teachers, yes.
Do you have those results available, what teacher feedback is?
We see that feedback. We would have to work hard to redact the information because it's personal information if you're asking it to be shared with you.
I'm just asking.
Generally, yes, we, we study that information. In fact, that's what I just shared, that Aaron Deal had sent us that feedback so that we could respond to that.
With the surveys, yes.
Any questions?
Okay.
Yes.
Moving right along. We, I think several of you asked about Park results. Park does, no longer exists. We now have the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program. The, the organization, actually.
I asked.
Oh, you did? Okay, sorry.
I'll be a new one soon enough.
They didn't take Park last year.
So you have those results. We called it Park, but it was, the Park organization no longer exists.
Okay.
We were following the direction of MSD and how to communicate that transition because we didn't want to create, I won't call it a panic, but we didn't want to create concerns they didn't want, and we in turn didn't want to create concerns that, oh, no, here we go again, a totally new test. So the items on Park, on the Park assessment that has been used in the past have, they are evolving into a new assessment, and that has been, as I said, evolving, and it is now the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, so.
So do you have the Parks, the Park scores from last year?
That's what we're getting ready to share.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you mean, well, the MCAP results.
Yeah.
Yes. It's, it is what you're talking about.
Okay.
It's just not referred to as Park.
Why do they change his name? Give it a name?
I, I think it's truly because Park, that consortium does not exist anymore. It's not that the assessment doesn't.
Yeah.
It's the consortium of states way back from when it was formed, when Common Core came into existence and the assessment needed to align with Common Core. There were two consortiums of states, and so Park no longer exists. So that's why it's not called Park anymore. So, yes, those results have just been released by MSD a couple of weeks ago.
Three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago, thank you, and reported those results at our last board meeting publicly, but we're happy to share them with you again and talk to you a little bit more about the release of information because I believe that was a question as well.
So, good morning again. I'm going to share a quick summary of the MCAP data, and then I'll actually give you guys just a link where you can be able to drill down into grade level-specific, school-level-specific data. So first, just want to share that at the end of the year for students in grades three through eight, and then in Algebra One and English Ten, they do take the MCAP assessment, and their score puts them into one of these five levels, from level one to five. Currently, for the Algebra One course and the English Ten course, those are graduation requirements. And those grad, for, to meet the graduation requirement, you have to score a level three, four, or five. So again, current students taking those two assessments must get a three, four, or five. I do want to go ahead and note that for next, for the rising eighth graders, those students who are going into ninth grade next year, the state is, has set the, has raised the bar, and the graduation requirement is proposed to be levels four and five for those students. That's a point of discussion in many groups across the state, but I did want to point that out.
So what happens if a student doesn't make level three, four, or five?
So if you do not meet level three, four, and five, we provide interventions and remediations with the hopes of you reassessing and then passing that assessment. And I'll show you a bar graph in just a second that'll highlight that. If, after reassessments, after multiple reassessments, you still have not met that graduation requirement, then we go through a bridge project where, because you didn't demonstrate mastery of the content on the assessment, it's, it's providing an alternative way for you to demonstrate mastery through a series of projects that have to get scored by multiple reviewers. And so then it kind of counts as a checkoff that you've indeed met that graduation requirement. All right, so I'm going to show you basically four groups, Math three to eight, Algebra One, ELA or English Language Arts, three to eight, and then English Ten. So these are the math scores over the last four years. We, it almost identically mirrored the state average and the fact that the state saw a decrease, as did we. So we saw a decrease in those students achieving a four, level four and five. Dr. Steiner, at that board, state board meeting, Dr. Steiner's a state board member and he's also a Johns Hopkins professor, he shared at that meeting that the state trend is also being mirrored across the nation. They're not sure why. They said there's several hypotheses out there, none of which he adheres to, but that they're currently investigating as to why we saw a decrease across the state. We're, obviously, while we pay attention to the rest of the state, we're obviously focused on our own data. Currently, as we sit here today, our Title One principals are meeting with our elementary math supervisor and really digging down into their school level and teacher level data, even down to the specific standard. What questions are they getting wrong? What are we doing well that we can expand upon? And what are some opportunities for growth? The next slide, the map was shared at the state level meeting, and I thought it was pretty important to share. You'll see the key on the left-hand side. Dark green would show a significant increase on level, on students' level, getting a level four or five. A light green would be a little bit of an increase. No change would be the gray, and then the pink would be a slight decrease with the red being an even more significant decrease. And you'll see that we did, as mentioned earlier, did see a slight decrease, as did many other counties across the state.
Dr. Briggs, does this reflect those counties that were already at grade level?
So this just shows their percentage of either going up or going down, so.
So they could have had a high percentage.
They could have, that's correct. Yep, yep, correct. Next was the Algebra One. Again, as mentioned, is a graduation requirement. And you'll notice that there's two bars off to the right. If I can talk about fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen real quick. So in years fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, to meet your graduation requirement, all you had to do was take the assessment one time. It was in those initial years of Park, now MCAP, and all students had to do was take the assessment. So we didn't have any repeaters that had to reassess. And so to compare apples to apples and make it a true comparison, we kind of broke out years eighteen and nineteen. And so those FTTT, that stands for first-time test takers. And so that's where we're looking forward to, where we want to see the increase. Similar to Math three to eight, we saw a slight decrease, unfortunately, here as well. When you look at that compared to the rest of the state, again, many states saw, or many counties saw a significant decrease, and we pretty much stayed the same. ELA, three to eight, similar to Math, we mirrored the state, but in this case, it was in a good way. We did see a slight increase in those students receiving a level four and five combined. ELA, English Language Arts, again, thank you, Dr. Hand. As far as the rest of the state, even though we did see an increase, it wasn't statistically significant. That's why we're still in the gray there.
Yeah. It's kind of.
I know, go ahead.
It's what jumps out, I think, that, you know, you went through the other two, I see a lot of red, a lot of red, gray and red, gray and red, no green. We get to this, well, it's all green and gray, no reds. So I'm like, what is it, what, how they're measuring it that's causing that?
We're, we're trying to figure that out. We had a very lengthy discussion at the Public School Superintendent's meeting last Friday about these results, and everyone is perplexed and working with, especially their supervisors of mathematics locally.
Yeah, that just definitely jumps out, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
And then the last group we'll talk about is the English Ten. And again, this is that graduation requirement, and we're proud to say, if you look at those, the first-time test takers in nineteen, we saw an increase in all three of those key levels. So the blue, the level five, we saw an increase, the green, we saw a pretty big jump in the green to level four, and we even saw an increase in the level three. So we're pretty proud to see that, that increase for English Ten. And then we'll kind of end with the best map, in my opinion, since we're in the dark green, where we showed the most significant amount of increase. And we were also actually above the state average there for English Ten success. And I'm sure you and many others watching at home might want to get more specific and drill down a little bit more. So if you want to go to marylandreportcard.org, you can see more county-level data by grade level, you can go into specific schools, you can get into star ra, star ratings where they look at other components besides assessment results. A lot of very useful information on that website. We actually use it quite frequently, both at the school improvement level and district-level school improvement process.
Dr. Briggs, was there a new ELA, well, it's a program, but model that you used last year? It, it just seemed like, as a parent, there was a lot more writing, which is good, and you can see it up there, that it brought the scores up. And so I wonder if there was a certain program that you implemented or something that?
There was. And so we took a district-wide focus, drawing a blank on the specific program, but.
Lucy Calkins.
Uh, Lucy Calkins, thank you, Dr. Hand. So the Lucy Calkins writing where, at all grade levels, including pre-K, and some of you guys might have seen that when you visited some classrooms, an increased focus on writing at a multiple grade level was brought in. PD, which, I love this type of PD, as opposed to pulling teachers from the classroom, the PD was sent into the classroom where people from Lucy Calkins actually came in and did model lessons. We had like a gallery where teachers would come in and watch the different experts work with our kids. It was extremely beneficial. The teachers were very receptive. Sometimes teachers aren't receptive to PD. In this case, they were. They loved it and they saw the benefits of it firsthand.
Yeah, well, congratulations to you. It was a, although my son wasn't very happy about writing more, it definitely, you can see even with the scores how it's impacted. Thank you.
Yeah, neither was mine, by the way, yeah.
So let me just make one more comment about that extended conversation that we had at PZAM because we do have great, great dialogue with superintendents across the state about issues such as data and results of student achievement. And we were, as I said, all talking about what, what was going on with Math. And Jack Smith, who is the superintendent from Montgomery County, I know that there's at least one other person in the room who has a great deal of respect for, for Dr. Smith, made a comment that I so relate to, and it's very true, that as we're working in Math and we are trying to expose or give our students opportunity for more and more rigorous curriculum, you can't, I wish that I had written down exactly what his quote was, but you, access has to happen. Access and opportunity have to precede achievement. So as he said, if you want me to get all fours and fives and you want that to be dark green, sure, I can just select those particular students to be in those math classes, but we believe in access and opportunity, and I think that's so very true. So we want them to achieve, and we're working towards that, but we also believe in exposing them and giving them opportunity to rigorous curriculum. Okay, Dr. Briggs, after-school programs.
All right. The learning doesn't stop at the end of the school day. We try to provide a wide variety of opportunities for our students outside the school in addition to summer programs. So first off, the first level of after-school programs is based upon student interest and staff expertise. All of our schools offer a variety of, you know, clubs, intramural sports, activities immediately after school, again, to meet the needs of their students. We do have four MSD grant-funded, more of official programs where those students have the opportunity to stay after for longer periods of time. They receive a meal and, and focused instructional time and then enrichment activities to meet, again, their interest. So we have four MSD programs. Those are Stars and Leap, and that's for students in first through fourth grade at three of our elementary schools. We have Stream, which is for students in grades three through five. We have Stream, which is for students in grades three through five. That's also at four, that's at four of our elementary schools. And then for our secondary students, we have Project Move for middle school students and then Step Up for those students in ninth through 12th grade. We also have programs such as the wonderful Wreckin' Parks program that you guys help sponsor through Wreckin' Parks, the Kids Club. Kids Club is in seven of our elementary schools, which again, provide an opportunity for students to have meaningful supervised areas to both work on homework, socialize with friends, and most of the time get a nutritious meal as well. So it's a good opportunity for our students outside the school day.
How come the after-school program, what was it, one you just mentioned?
Kids Club.
Kids Club. Why isn't that in the middle schools?
That would be a question for Wreckin' Parks. I know that they serve ages five to 12, but I'm guessing based upon student interest, but I'm not sure.
I was wondering if it was interest, because I always thought it would be beneficial to families that have to work and couldn't pick their kids up or didn't have a place for their kids to be after school.
I know last year, just in our four programs, we serviced over 500 students. So we definitely, our students and their families take advantage of these programs. And it serves a real need, as you mentioned, parents who don't have any of that aftercare because of work schedules. So it's definitely a need. Thank you.
Dr. Briggs, what's the qualifications for children to stay in those programs?
So no real qualifications for those. They're site-specific based upon the socioeconomic status of the students in that, in that school, basically the Title I designation. But there is no requirements for the students, just, you know, parent permission.
So they don't need to be free or reduced lunch or anything like that? They can, they can participate in them?
In order to receive the funding initially to support the program, that had to be in place, but then it's open to, to any student.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are. And we may, we've covered some of this, but gifted and talented education.
Yeah, just so I can follow up quickly, Mrs. Ackley mentioned the new changes to COMAR. And those changes went into effect in June. One of the, the main changes, I want to make sure I quote it right, was the terminology that the state was using. And it used to be that, you know, school districts shall consider. Now it's, they shall provide. It's, it's a, and fortunately, we were in a good shape because we actually, unlike many, especially on the lower shore, we have existing programs for our students, whether it's, we have primary talent development at our, in our primary ages. That's currently being piloted. We have both TAD and SEEK for our elementary school students, and then we have TAD for our middle school students. We're providing PD for teachers, those classroom teachers that need to do a better job of reaching those GT students. We provide that. We're increasing that now with that, with this focus for high school students that are, we have the Visual Performing Arts Program. We have AP courses. We have dual enrollment for those high school students. We have two schools that received EGATE designation, both North Salisbury and Westside Intermediate have earned that prestigious designation. And I know we have two other schools that are working on it. And I know we have one teacher who's currently working on their GT certification through McDaniel University. That's a new program that MSD is promoting. So while we're always looking to strengthen those programs, you know, we were actually used as a model at one of the most recent MSD briefings because of the programs that we currently do have for our students. But obviously, we're always trying to improve and are doing that as, as we speak.
So Dr. Briggs, TAD is in every school?
TAD is in every elementary school serving students three to five, correct.
Okay. So Prince Street, they all have TAD?
They all have TAD. Now, they have different numbers of students as identified by the criteria. So for example, North Salisbury, as it hosts the Magnet School, has an increased number as compared to some of the other schools, but it is in every one of the elementary schools, yes, even those Title I schools. Because all of those schools have high-achieving gifted students who are identified through our universal screening process. And so, yes, they are receiving those services.
So there's a significant number of students in every school receiving, because according to COMAR, significant number.
And we're still waiting for a little direction.
And in middle school, right? In middle school too.
Yeah, that's correct. And so...
Because we only have TAD in middle school.
Correct.
Next gen is not gifted and talented.
That's correct, correct. Now, we do, we are piloting a new advanced math class at Bennett Middle School this year. And we're looking for other ways to reach those high, those gifted middle school students. And we're still waiting for some direction from MSD on what does significant mean. If we probably pulled everybody in here, we might get 100 different, 75, 75 different definitions for what significant means. So we'll keep you posted.
Well, the meeting I attended last week, the verbiage was 10% at every school.
So they have defined that it's 10% for the entire district.
Yeah.
They're saying 10% for the entire district with a significant number at each school is the latest we've heard. So it'd be interesting to see how that plays out and we'll obviously keep you posted.
That's a good thing we're fully funded for that, we don't need additional funding.
I have a question. It's made the news lately about a lot of schools, some school systems are dropping spelling tests for elementary schools, plus even sometimes class, you know, classes for spelling.
Yeah, we're not dropping spelling.
Okay.
Okay, that, we're, we have organized our spelling instruction in a different way that could lead people to, to assume that we're doing what you've read about in other places, but we are not dropping spelling. We are making it more relevant to students, rather than having isolated lists of words that aren't associated with the instruction that students are receiving in other areas, like science instruction, social studies instruction. Those, the lists that are created and the same thing happens, they're provided to students in lists and that, yes, they do have spelling assessments. Those come from words they're studying in other subjects during the day, if that makes sense, rather than, I know when I was a teacher many years ago, we had a separate spelling book with separate spelling lists and just trying to make it more relevant.
So do you still have spelling tests?
Yes.
It's just not a separate grade on the report card. It's because it's included in that ELA, English Language Arts block, so it's incorporated into that grade.
We are teaching spelling. Thank you for asking the question, so we can communicate that. Last item is really an announcement. You may have heard that the, the Education Network of the Chamber is spearheading an opportunity for Britt Kerwin, Dr. Kerwin, to come and speak to our community on the recommendations of the Kerwin Commission. That is scheduled for October the eighth in the evening from six to 7:30 at Warwick Community College in the Garrery Center. I know there currently, there's a press release that's being edited and flyers and so forth, but put it on your calendars, because it's important that we're all, I know you're familiar with the work of the, of the Kerwin Commission. They are in the last few days of their Funding Formula Work Group, so that will be interesting, the outcome of that. So October eighth.
Great.
And that concludes...
Very good.
The long agenda.
Yeah.
I thought it was on our list of questions, but for the viewers, will you explain why we keep hearing that teachers have to pay for their own supplies?
Okay. So all schools receive funding in accounts called materials of instruction. And so principals have the discretion of how they distribute that, that funding. I think I recently answered this for the board. In, you know, the case, a principal of an elementary school might distribute it by grade level, and that grade level, that fifth-grade team would determine, how do we, how do we want to spend our materials of instruction funding? So it's what teachers want to buy above and beyond that, that they're going out and purchasing themselves. We provide what they need to teach.
I'll be sure and tell that to the next teacher that complains to me.
Okay, please do, or tell them to, to speak to us. I know, I know, we've had this discussion before, but it would help me to know specific examples of where they believe that's not happening.
And if it's, if it's happening specifically at one school versus an entire, then we can deal with that process versus just a general...
I can tell you that when I was a teacher, I went out, I loved going to the teacher's supply store. We didn't have one here then. It's that long ago, it was in Baltimore. And I would make a trip because I loved to do that. And I didn't mind buying extra things to create bulletin boards and things like that. But the essentials of what I needed to teach were provided through materials of instruction from board accounts.
Are the teachers involved in the budget process? Are they allowed to submit what they need annually?
They talk to their principals, who then talk to us about what their funding needs are.
I think even in parts of the Kerwin Commission report, they were talking about how they were not considering teacher's supplies as part of the formula. And I mentioned technology as well as part of what they weren't considering. I was somewhat surprised by that. I'm still trying to get my arms around the whole thing. But the eighth obviously sounds like it's going to be a very worthwhile event. Any other comments?
I have one last question. And this is coming from my district, is, are these solar panels at Mardella? And I know we, Mr. Stauffer and I spoke a little bit about it, but who is, the agreement is with solar?
I'm going to let Mike go speak to that, because I know, I know he's been very involved in, in researching, because that's been in place for a few years since before my time, so.
What was your question, Mrs. Ackley?
The agreement with SolarCity to have this done, this was something that, this, this agreement was signed with the Board of Education, or this was something that was right before council?
So my understanding is that at the September 16th, 2014 County Council meeting, that, that agreement was approved. And then at the Board of Education meeting in November of 2014, the same agreement was also approved. At that point, it was, it was clear for SolarCity to be able to start working with both the county and the Board of Education to look at sites where a solar field may be appropriate. Moving forward, my understanding is there were no sites that were selected for the county, but there were two that were selected through the Board of Education. One was on the back of the property of Mardella and Northwestern. And the second was when James &amp; Bennett was being built. It's now there in the center of the bus, bus loop at James &amp; Bennett.
Okay. And how is this reflected in your budget? Does this be a revenue? Is it an offset? Does it...
So it's an offset. So all of the utilities that are incurred through each of the sites, and we have about 30, 20, 24, 25 schools, and then also four or five additional sites, those utilities come through the Board of Education in the operations account through the, through the general fund. So the schools are not responsible for paying the utility bills. All of those are sent in, out of a centralized account. At Mardella specifically, for instance, those solar panels would offset the energy costs. Whatever there are, whatever energy they're creating is working to offset the energy costs that those two sites, Mardella Middle and High School and Northwestern Elementary School, are incurring each month. So it's cost avoidance is what it is.
Could you get me copies of those agreements?
Yes.
To share with us? Thank you.
Yes. I had indicated to you that we would be able to do that. We'll, we'll certainly work with SolarCity to make sure that they're aware of, of the request, and then we'll get those agreements to you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Has there ever been an audit done to see how much it does save, or a study done to see?
Yes. I spoke with our procurement manager yesterday, and he does have that information. I would say that in his thoughts, that that particular agreement was very beneficial for us. It's, it's not something probably, as you've heard maybe at times in the news, the solar panels on tops of people's roofs and, and those kinds of things don't always pan out to, to be very cost savings. But that particular agreement was a 20-year agreement at a, at a great rate for us. And that was something that has, has been very beneficial for us.
It might be interesting to see, you know, as we move forward and have other opportunities to put, you know, put solar panels...
Absolutely.
I, I think just one piece of clarification, it was my understanding that when this originally came up, it was stated that it was on a 15-acre site. It's 1.5 acres.
Okay.
Thank you very much for taking the time and being here and going through the, through the journey with us.
Thank you.
Everybody's doing great work. Very good work. Good seeing everyone.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda, we have a presentation by Walk Wycomico Coalition, and we have Ms. Kara Rosowski, Director of Prevention and Health Communication with the Wycomico County Health Department, and Ms. Tracy Gordy with the Maryland Department of Planning.
Hi. Thank you.
Tracy, how are you?
How are you?
All right, good to see you.
Hello.
Thank you.
If you could, just for the public, state your name and your title, that would be very helpful.
Sure. Kara Rosieski with the Wycomico County Health Department, Director of Prevention and Health Communications.
I'm Tracy Gordy with the Maryland Department of Planning, Lower Eastern Shore Regional Office in Salisbury.
Well, we appreciate you coming today. I know that you were anxious to, to make a presentation for us, and we're certainly glad and anxious to hear what you have to say.
Thank you so much for giving us a few minutes, and we will take just a few minutes. Informal presentation, just to introduce ourselves as a coalition. We are Walk Wycomico, no space between the two words. And we started about three years ago under grant funding that the Health Department received from the state, Health Department. And basically, it's just a, a group of folks who are interested professionally and personally in making walking more accessible, more interesting, more desirable for people in the county. And the reason for that is, walking has been found to be just a wonderful way to combat chronic diseases. And if you're combating chronic disease, you're combating healthcare costs, whether that's personal healthcare costs or professional healthcare costs and business healthcare costs. So walking is, is kind of, I don't want to say a magic pill, but it's, it's a, just a great way to literally and figuratively move along health-wise and also mental health-wise. It's been shown to have lots of different benefits. So Walk Wycomico, again, is a coalition of community and governmental partners. And just to give you an idea of some of the folks that we have, of course, planning with Tracy, City of Salisbury, the Extension Office, Shore Transit, PRMC, and of course, the Health Department, and some county agencies, such as Parks and Rec, and the Board of Ed. And we're basically also open to anyone who's interested in walking in their community. And what we're trying to do, I mean, we're, we're working at all of this with very little money. And I mean, very little money, and we're not asking for money. Just wanted to let you know that it's really a desire and a passion for the folks who are involved, and it's really not about the money. And what we're trying to do is just encourage people to walk wherever they are, or come to one of the walks that we host, or go to a walk that is hosted by a fundraiser, or a free one like PRMC's Sneakers and Creepers that's coming up in October. So we're trying to let people know about events, and we do that through social media and through our website, which has a calendar of events. And Facebook is our most active page. We're, we keep struggling to get active on the other ones, and we're working on that. And we also, we just want people in Wycomico County to feel like it's okay to walk, it's desirable to walk, it's fun, it's for family, it's for friendship, and it's for fitness also, because walking here is safe, convenient, and accessible. And that gets into realms that are beyond our control, but we wanted to just alert you to the fact that we do exist and that... We keep struggling to get active on the other ones, and we're working on that. And we also, we just want people in Wacomiko County to feel like it's okay to walk, it's desirable to walk, it's fun, it's for family, it's for friendship, and it's for fitness also, because walking here is safe, convenient, and accessible. And that gets into realms that are beyond our control, but we wanted to just alert you to the fact that we do exist and that we are here to help. And Tracy's going to share some more things.
So, good afternoon, or good morning, actually. Getting close. Usually you see me in my capacity with Maryland Department of Planning. And for the new council members, we provide planning and zoning technical assistance to counties and municipalities on the lower eastern shore from Talbot County down. So our office is across the street on Baptist Street, and we provide assistance to Talbot and the lower shore counties and twenty-eight municipalities within those counties. But I also serve on Salisbury-Wacomiko Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I'm currently Vice Chair of the TAC Committee. And Kara came in and made a presentation about walking and this coalition and creating this sort of movement. And I volunteered to be on that committee, and so that is how I came to know Kara and got involved with Walk Wacomiko. As Kara mentioned, we really don't have a budget per se, and this is really not our day jobs. This is such a small portion of our regular jobs, and we try to make this fit because we do care a lot about it. And we are on social media, so if you could do us one favor today, if you are on Facebook, you know, look up Walk Wacomiko, follow us. We are over four hundred and fifty followers now. We've done quite a bit as far as getting the word out of who we are. We've done the Walk at Lunch event, and we got a lot of followers after that. We're also on Instagram. I'm not a big Instagram person, that's more my son's generation, I think, but I, we do have over two hundred followers on Instagram as well. So the good thing about Facebook, if you're on it for Walk Wacomiko, is Kara's really good about putting information, benefits of walking, but also sort of motivational type things, and also letting you know when our events are. So that's really the key thing, is to be able to see what we've got going on you can do through Facebook. If you're not a social media person, that's fine, too. We've created a website called WalkWacomiko.com. I think it's on the rack card that Kara set down. And that's a really great website in the sense that it, we have some motivational stuff on there, we have some information about the benefits of walking. But what we also have is we have the events calendar, which is really great because you can look on there and see, our goal is to try to at least have information on the events calendar for people interested in walking to have one free walking event per month that you don't have to pay for. And we recognize that many of the five Ks, you also have the walking option. But we also like to promote the free events, so that it's all-inclusive, available to everyone. But we promote the paid events, too. We'll put those on there as well for people that are interested. We talk about starting walking clubs and tips for that on there. We also have the trails listed on there. If you go to the site and you click, it'll have Wacomiko County Trails. I think you'll find that to be quite nifty, to look at your own county trails and your different facilities and be able to have that information on a website. Talks about our mission. And within the trail maps, it also lists amenities. It lists if it's ADA accessible, if there's restrooms, if there's water features, for you to get a drink of water, things of that nature. So very helpful website. If you're not into social media, and you don't want to visit the website, and you spend most of your time on your phone, then you can download our phone app. We have a phone app. If you go and search, it's for iOS and Android-based phones, and you can put in Walk Wacomiko. And again, when you look at the phone app, we have some really great how-to videos that were filmed by people representative of the community. We have the GPS trail locator. We have the step tracker. You can submit photos, you can share those photos. I mean, there's a lot of different things you can do on that phone app, so I would encourage you to do that as well. And then one of the other things that we've really tried to work hard to do is promote walks. And we have our own walk that we are calling our signature, our annual walk, which is our glow walk, which is sort of like a party dance glow walk sort of thing. And we did it last year in conjunction with Walk to Connect in the Salisbury City Park, and I think we probably had around a hundred people attend. And it was really cool and great to go through the park at night with everybody in their glow sticks and playing music, and it was just a really great community event. We mirrored that this year in June, was it? Yes, because it was the hottest day of the year, and we did it down at the Falcons Field in Fruitland at the track. And we had, given the fact that it was hot, we had, we had over a hundred register. We didn't have a hundred show up, and we understood why. But we partnered with Rec and Parks, and they played music for us, and we had water donated by Hurls, and we had the glow sticks. And Walk Wacomiko has been able to purchase some little sneakers, so that each time that you come to one of our walks, you receive a different colored sneaker with a little chain and a little pouch. So we've got some child's keys that we give as incentives to walkers, and we're really just trying to, you know, get out there, make people wear. I think everybody that's come to the walks have enjoyed them. We also are planning a walk now for December with Mindy Burgoyne, who does the Eastern Shore Ghost Tours. So Mindy has offered to do a free walk for us at Christmas time, and we're going to call it the Ghosts of Christmas Past. And we're going to have hot chocolate and do a downtown Salisbury tour with Mindy. So we're really trying hard to spark an interest and have some themed walks. And then also with our partners like PRMC's Walk with the Costume Walk, we're also trying to do, we did the Folk Festival. We did the Sneak Peak Walk for the Folk Festival and went around to all the venues with Mindy from the city of Salisbury. And so, you know, more and more, I think you'll hear about us. But we really, when we were in our meeting the last time, it was just this aha moment where we thought, we don't even think that the county council is even aware of us and what we're doing. And we just wanted you to be aware of us and know some of the things that we're doing. And please follow us on one of our applications and see the walks we're doing and just figure out moving forward if there's anything that we can do to partner with you or any ideas you have for us.
Have you integrated your program with any of the Fitbit things that people are doing so much now? And I know there's like two of you right here.
Yeah. That's pretty much it.
Yeah. That's kind of difficult. We've done various challenges. There's a Billion Step Challenge every spring that the American Public Health Association does. And what ends up happening a lot of times, for example, my tracker won't sync with their program. So you have to spend money and do lots of things to get that stuff to happen. What you can do is you can download like Google Fit on your phone, and then you just kind of manually input it into a challenge of that nature. But yeah, I think you're going a little more techie than we are capable of right now.
Sure.
The app, again, does have a step tracker in it, and we're thrilled to have the app.
One thing that we are, let all of you know that we are focusing on more and more is we're trying to be as inclusive as we can be. And so when we are planning walks, we want to make sure that we're doing walks that are ADA accessible and that they're accessible to all walks of life, you know, every age group, every socioeconomic status. And so if we need to move our walks to accommodate people that can't get to us, that's our goal. And so that's why we're looking at our different walks at different locations, even going to some of our towns for municipal walks. And Kara has some signs, walking signs, that we're going to partner with the towns to map out, like a one-mile route in the town, so that when we go away, that route is still marked for the citizens, say, of Sharp Town or Mardella Springs or Pittsville, that they have a walking loop that they know is a mile loop, and it's a safe walk. So that's something that we have planned for the future as well.
You make a lot of headway. I did go online, and you have a lot of great partners here. And you're partnering with a really broad, you know, group of organizations and government and commerce as well, which is very good. The list that you have of walks, have you tried to reach out to the Center of Salisbury? Because the first place I think of when I think of walks is how many people actually go out there and walk through that area. It may be something you could consider.
That's a great question. And I want to be politically correct when I say this, but, you know, we, actually, someone reached out to us on our social media about the fact that the mall had changed their hours, which made it not conducive to folks walking. And we did reach out to the center, and, I mean, their hours are their hours, so we couldn't do anything about it. But we did try.
Right.
And we did bring it to their attention.
Yes, Josh?
Are you, are you involved with, I know the city Salisbury, their employees, they do, was it the Health of Salisbury? They do their walks in the middle of, I don't know if the county does anything like that, but that, part of their health insurance program, and, but they get out in the middle of the day. I just know they post pictures online when they do their walks together. It'd be great if the county did something along with that or other businesses, but I don't know anything about that.
And we have partnered with the city on many things. They're also a healthiest Maryland business, and we've partnered with them through that also. You know, I'm, I'm not sure what the county does as far as their insurance is involved and the activities, but that could be something to look into, yes. And another partnership coming up that I did want to let you know about, October second, is Walk Maryland Day. It's the fifth anniversary. If you don't know this, walking is Maryland's physical activity. It's the official physical activity to combat the state dessert of Smith Island cake, which I love. And so that's October second, and we will be hosting a walk at the amphitheater at twelve thirty. And we would love to have you guys come out, anyone who can, and we have, take your pictures and put it on our Facebook page and have a good time. And we're trying to get folks to wear their Maryland colors. So again, this is such a tiny, tiny thing, but if you think about the fact that we all sit most of our days and our bodies aren't made for that, it's actually a very huge thing.
That's what I keep telling y'all, we're not letting you sit here for.
Yes. Yes, I would encourage walking breaks at council meetings.
If you want to run around the table a couple times.
So it might seem simple or silly or supercilious, but it's actually tremendously important just to our everyday health and well-being.
Speaking of that, have you reached out to the cardiologists? Because it seems like when people start walking at the mall and other places, it's after they've had an MI.
Right. That's a great point. We actually did try to get something with Parks and Rec called Park RX, which would be where doctors were prescribing walking, which, believe it or not, doctors are now doing. They're prescribing walking or just time in green spaces, because again, it's been found to be so beneficial. That did not get off the ground through no fault of Parks and Rec. It was the actual Park RX folks. But that's a great idea, too. Yeah.
It'll be worth looking into again.
Yes.
Well, we really appreciate you coming here. And I wasn't aware of Walk America until you contacted us, and so we're really glad that you had the opportunity to share that with us and with the public. And good luck, and let us know through email or something on your event.
Professor, can I?
Yes.
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm very familiar with your initiative, and we do, my husband and I own a medical practice, so we do refer patients to the walk programs. And our district is Pirate's Wharf, if you're familiar with that. I spoke with one of the, one of the constituents there who was looking at walking trails and starting a walking program there. I don't know, I haven't been there yet. I'm scheduled to go on October eighth, but I don't know if that would be something, if you could have something there.
It's not quite ready yet.
It's not? Okay.
Yeah, they have, yeah, they don't have their trails all done yet.
Okay.
But yeah, it's going to be a great, that will be.
Well, thank you for letting me, because I don't really know the history behind it, but I.
Right. I'm a Whitehaven girl, so I'm very excited about Pirate's Wharf and very excited that there will be additional trails in this county, because I think we don't have a national park, we don't have a state park. It's all up to us. It's up to the city and the county. And I think we do a great job, and I'm just looking forward to more trails. And yes, we actually, working with municipalities and businesses, we are more than happy to give our two cents. We are not expert trail builders, but we, you know, we're walkers, so we're more than happy to share information and input and ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we could cross-promote that, too.
Yes.
You know, when Pirate's Wharf gets up and running, that's something that we would hold into, you know, our information that we put out.
I got your card here.
If you look at the back of one of the rack cards, it does have the trails listed. And we're running out of room, which is fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item for your consideration is Resolution Number One, Twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing the county executive to accept grant funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Maryland State Department of Education for Early Childhood Strategic Planning. And we have Mrs. Michelle Bradley here, Director of the Wacomiko Partnership for Family and Children.
I obtain a motion from council to approve Resolution One Twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen. Second. Discussion. Morning, Ms. Bradley, how are you?
Good morning. Good.
You have, trying to wrap up a grant for twenty-five thousand. We appreciate that.
Yes. This is the two thousand and nineteen preschool development, birth through five grants, and every jurisdiction in the state of Maryland, if you applied for it, you got it. Everybody got twenty-five thousand. So this kind of picks up where the race to the top money left off back in two thousand and fifteen. Wacomiko County Early Learning Childhood Council has been unfunded since then and kind of working under the steam power of the membership and the Board of Education. So when they approached me this summer about applying for the grant and kind of taking it over as a neutral convener, the LMB said yes. And I did want to kind of piggyback on what Dr. Hanlon said about JA, because we're actually funding that program, too, the financial literacy. So we have a pretty good working relationship with them, and to kind of take some of this burden off and add accountability, the LMB agreed to step in and apply for the grant.
Thank you.
Good. I gotta use your mic to answer.
Sorry.
Any questions from anyone? All those in favor of Resolution One Twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. And, yeah.
I have a few questions.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I was just looking down through the grant, and this, this council has been in place for some time, and you are just now taking it over. Who was the, who previously had the oversight on this council?
Well, I've been doing a little bit of research on it, because the initial council that got together had, people have come and gone. I think Karen Carton was instrumental in first starting it, now she's with Somerset County Board of Education. And that was the case with a lot of partners. And I think it was basically before I was approached, it was Sandra Drummond and Patty Atkins were kind of just doing it because there, there wasn't anyone in place at that time.
And what did they, what initiatives did they do for twenty-five thousand? Do you know?
I know that they conducted some resource fairs, but I've actually been trying to do some research and connect with them to get any historical documentation that they had since the committee was in place. It was the beginning of the school year, I guess they'd been busy. I haven't gotten much with the bylaws. And I do have some minutes from where, you know, I've attended in the past myself last year, and my staff also attended, and I believe Weston from the executive branch attended some meetings to represent the county. But other than that, I couldn't give you any details, because we just don't have the historical documentation on what they did.
On what they did. Okay. And then, do you have a, you have a full board now? Were you able to?
Well, we have, I think, I think it's a max on our bylaws of thirty-two members, and we are, we are there just about. We've just started recruiting some parents and caregivers. We have one grandparent and one parent that have joined the council now. So we're just looking at those qualifications and the minimum requirement for attendance to see if we need to make any changes. But since we have implemented hiring the consultant to come over from due east across the bridge, the board has gotten much more engaged. We're seeing attendance go up and people are participating. And we'll be conducting two focus groups on the fifteenth. One is at the Chamber of Commerce at one o'clock, and the other one is at Salisbury University at Lower Shore Resource Center, but that one's geared directly towards private providers in early childhood education.
Okay. Will you be able to at least keep the website up to date with meeting minutes and agendas, or can you report back to us on the progress you're making?
Yes, we're actually in the process of working on that now. The website that was up there was linked to the county page and has since been removed. And they have a Facebook page, and I'm working on trying to get access as an administrator to highlight some of the things we've already posted, or we've already been involved in, like the Fresh Start Event. You know, so we can, because branding is one of the things that has come out in our surveys from our key informants, that people don't really know what, what we do and what we're supposed to be doing, so.
And I've gotten a lot of unsolicited positive feedback on your work, so congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Glad to see you.
Thank you.
She's doing great. I was on, I've been on there with the prior director. Since she's been there, we moved a lot. I mean, when I was on there previously, I really didn't know what we were there for. But since she's been there, she's educated us and got us really involved, so she's doing a good job.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate you.
You've done an excellent job, Michelle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We're all done.
You're going to make me blush.
It's been approved. We're good. Council has approved the resolution, and we appreciate it very much.
We're good. Council has approved the resolution and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 125, 2019, making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Department of Public Works Roads Division in the amount of $71,970 for the Cody Cox Drainage Project. Council did have a work session on this request at its last meeting on September the 3rd. And we have Mr. Dallas Baker here, Director of Public Works, if there are any questions.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 125, 2019. So move. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I think we reviewed this. Did you have anything that you wanted, did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Baker?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 125, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Mr. Hitchens, good morning still.
Good morning. I'd like to call your attention Resolution 126, 2019, accepting the consultation report on community corrections at the Wacomico County Department of Corrections.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution Number 126, 2019. So move. Second.
Second.
Discussion. Did you want to elaborate, Mr. Hitchens?
Sure. We performed a consultation to assess the staffing levels at the DOC for their community corrections team. The community corrections oversees several programs. Examples are clients awaiting trial, community service participants, drug court participants. The clients enrolled in these programs are, as the name suggests, out in the community and they require varying amounts of supervision. We met with the staff at community corrections multiple times, learning their responsibilities and challenges. Most of their team members are cross-trained to do almost every task in the office. We also thoroughly reviewed the Justice Reinvestment Act, the JRA, which went into effect October 2017. The JRA forecasts savings with its implementation and part of the savings are supposed to be reinvested back into local corrections centers. Our DOC received a $50,000 grant, which was used to enhance the community corrections program. We performed a couple trend analysis, both over three-year periods, which showed an upward trend for client enrollment as well as case manager activity on helping their clients. One of the areas that saw largest increase was electronic monitoring. As a result, that program has initiation fees as well as daily fees that the clients pay into the county. Because this population has gone up so much, in 2017 and 18, we received about 17,000, 18,000. But in 2019, we received 39,000 in proceeds from that program. We did make a couple minor suggestions for the team over there. One was making sure they record as many activities as possible into their electronic database. And the other was a simple suggestion for how to arrange their busiest days to help with client visitations. Overall, as a conclusion, with the upward trend of the population, observations of the management, our supervisor of the team performing case management duties on a regular basis, we do recommend management combine that with their knowledge of the industry to consider adding another case manager position to help with the workload. We would like to thank the staff at Department of Corrections. They had us in their office probably half dozen times and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 126, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchens. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. Good morning, gentlemen.
It's good to have the opportunity to walk Wacomico, even if it's just the 25 steps. Mr. President, thank you very much. My name is Mike Dunn. I'm the President and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee. I'm joined by Bill Chambers, the President and CEO of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to, we're here to talk about Warwick, which is the next thing on your agenda, but I wanted to first, let me get my notes up. Mr. Cannon, on behalf of the business community, and this is pretty much overwhelmingly on behalf of the business community, we're talking to 100 members of the Greater Salisbury Committee and the 700 or so members of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for your opening comments this morning regarding the National Folk Festival. Yesterday, Bill and I took turns fielding texts, phone calls from our member organizations and just some of those member organizations, Peninsula Regional Medical Center, Purdue Farms, Pohanka, Avery Hall, Salisbury University, Henson Foundation, Greater Salisbury Committee members, the Chamber of Commerce, hundreds of local Salisbury and Wacomico County residents. The words we heard yesterday, we don't say these words lightly and we don't say them ah, but the words that we heard in describing the letter that was back and forth between the county executive and the comptroller's chief of staff, these words were mostly critical, not mostly, they were all critical, of the letter sent by county executive Culver. And the words were, words like embarrassing, crazy, incredulous, ridiculous, shocked, dismayed, and distracting. We're here to do what everybody, I think, in this community is doing, which is to celebrate in the positive afterglow of this amazingly successful event, the National Folk Festival. No matter what number you care to believe we're here, the streets of downtown Salisbury, which are the streets of the county seat of Wacomico County, were full of visitors. They were full of locals, not just Salisbury residents, but residents of the entire area. And our organizations collectively were here today to stand behind the issuing of the state license that comptroller Franchot legally gave to the National Folk Festival, the city of Salisbury, for the consumption of beer and alcohol in a safe environment. And again, the statistics prove that for two years, this has been an overwhelmingly successful event and an overwhelmingly safe event. So we just wanted to come up right now and again, thank you. Obviously, you're going to be writing some sort of letter. We'll stick around to hear what that is. But we appreciate that the council is really saying, what we're all saying collectively as a community, which was, this was an extraordinary event and the last 48 to 72 hours take nothing away from the success of the National Folk Festival. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Yeah, ditto Mr. Dunn's comments. Unfortunate incidents which have just occurred that we're referring to are a good reason why businesses question whether they should even come here. Further, as an event organizer, you have to question whether you want to bring your event here. So I hope we can all move forward and remember that we're all in this together. We're one community and one jurisdiction. With that said, I did want to comment on behalf of both organizations on the Economic Impact Scholarship that you'll be taking up here in a few minutes with Warwick. To Councilman Ackley's point a couple of hours ago, this is exactly the kind of program that benefits college-bound students and college-bound students that need a leg up. And understanding that regardless of the state initiatives for free community college tuition, we need to join with so many other counties in Maryland and continue our own program. It'd be easy to wipe the program out and depend on the state. Anyone in this room that thinks you can depend on the state needs to look inward because I think we need to possess and keep our own program here in Wacomico County for our students. Yes, it started off slow and continues to be slow, but I don't think that's a reason to go backwards on this. I think we need to maintain what we have and as we move forward, evaluate that progress. It takes a while for our parents and caregivers to understand that this is a program that they have an option to enroll their students in. So I would urge the council to continue to support the Economic Impact Scholarship initiative as we move forward in the next coming fiscal years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers.
Good morning. My name is Mary Ashanti and I'm President of Wacomico County NAACP. And I always thank God for the opportunity to be here. I stand also in support of continuing to do enrollment program. I, since I retired, I've attended Warwick off and on and whatever. And what I see, I'm attending there now, and what I see is a lot of, there's a great need for us to support Warwick. And I'd like to see us to continue to do that. And I'd like to see more parents send their children to Warwick so that when they get out of school, if they start early enough, they can really graduate with a degree at the same time. And that's a great opportunity that's offered. And I urge us, praise you for supporting in the past and urge you to continue. And in reference to the Folk Festival, I saw that as a great event. It's just, I can't say anything else about it. It was just a great event. And everybody that was involved in getting it here and making it a successful job, well done.
Yeah. Thank you, President Ashanti.
Greetings, President Cannon and council members. My name's Donnie Waters. I'm a concerned citizen of Wacomico County. First, I want to also say I fully support dual enrollment funding for Warwick Community College. One of the great things about Warwick, I don't know whether you know or not, 90% of their graduates remain here and work in our county. So that's an excellent return on investment. Dr. Hoy and his staff are doing an excellent job, well-involved in the community, strong pillars of the community. And they're a very important part of our educational assets in the community, being public K-12, private K-12, higher ed, Salisbury University, Warwick, and University of Maryland Eastern Shore. We have a strong educational asset-based. And I pray that you continue to support it. Against all the cries of spending, we have to invest in our citizenry and in our youth. A well-educated youth is going to be the key, primary leg of our economic well-being in Wacomico County. Secondly, I want to speak very briefly because I think a lot has been said about the actions of the county exec of Wacomico County. I do appreciate your comments. That's well-stated, but the fact of the matter is, in front of his name is Wacomico County Executive. And whether you like it or not, it's a reflection on the county. And that entire leadership from the executive of office, I've sat here several times and I've witnessed citizens come for and complain about the promises made that then are perceived as lies coming out of the executive office, misrepresentation of information. And most recently, I understand, as I looked at WBOC's airing of what he said, he said he wasn't trying to accuse anyone of anything. He was asking questions. The mayor's office is not too far from his office. All he has to do is walk and talk to the mayor. Doesn't make sense. One of the greatest documents that this nation has brought forward is the Constitution, Bill of Rights, and it says, "We, the people." We stand up here and we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Either "all" means "all." It doesn't matter whether you're Republican. Doesn't matter whether you're Democrat. It does not matter whether you're independent. We are citizens of Wacomico County and we deserve better. It's time out for all this foolishness and trying to be politically correct and so forth. It is what it is. We need better leadership in this county. We need forward-thinking individuals who will strap up, do the research, find out what the trends are across the country, and then carve out a strategy of how we're going to move forward. I'm gonna say a couple more things and then I'll sit down. I don't know whether any of you know who Mackenzie and Company is. Mackenzie and Company is one of the greatest consultancies in this country. They consult with governments all around the world, with the federal government and with thriving businesses. They did a study on the workforce trends going into the 21st century, and they made categories. In the small-city category, did you know who was there? The city of Salisbury. That says about, a lot about the leadership in the city of Salisbury and that team, who are working together, generating a lot of excitement, a lot of interest, and people are willing to come and begin to invest money. So I would encourage you to put your party affiliations aside and do what's best for this county and the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Council comments. At this time, entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by administrative closed session pursuant to the General Provisions Article, Section 3-104 to discuss internal audit of project updates, then followed by a closed work session pursuant to General Provisions Article, Section 3-305B1 to discuss the legal personnel matter and succession planning to protect the privacy of the individuals. So move. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. First item that we have on the agenda is the Economic Impact Scholarship, as was discussed with many others this morning. Mr. Newton, good to see you.
Good to see you.
If you could state your name and title for the public, that would be great.
Sure. Name is Brian Newton, Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Services at Warwick Community College. And, Mr. President, council members, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you once again about this program. You have delivered to you the report that we do annually, and what I want to do is just highlight a few items in that report, talk about the Maryland Community College Promise Program, and then talk about the future of the program with you just a little bit. You did see in your packet that we really kind of changed the report this year at your suggestions and in our past conversations. As you know, this is a last-dollar-funded program, so we have students that have come to the program that have their needs taken care of through Pell Grants and other means, but they are not funded with Wacomico County dollars. And so we have focused the report primarily this year on those students that have received dollars through the Wacomico Economic Impact Scholarship Fund. And there are 62 students in the three years that have received Wise Funds. And at the moment, and as students progress through, we have 33 students, or 53%, that have graduated, transferred to another college, or have continued at Warwick either for part-time. We have quite a few students that are continuing with us in a part-time capacity. The program requires 12 credits to continue receiving funding, but we have a number of students who couldn't handle that 12 credits and continue to work or take care of families or whatever it might be. And so they have continued with us in a part-time capacity. We still consider that to be a success. They are gaining college credits. They are moving through college. And it will take them a little longer to graduate than this program anticipated, but they are on a course to complete a certificate or degree that will have an impact on their economic situation and the impact of the region's and the county's economic situation in the years to come. We admitted a class last year. We did not admit a class this year. As you'll recall, we had all agreed that we were going to suspend admitting a class this year as we looked at the beginnings of the Promise Scholars, the statewide Promise Scholarship Program. But we did admit a cohort last year. We had 342 applications, so- So again, we had a large number of applications received. But when all was said and done, taking into account last dollar funding, we had 17 students that received some WISE funds throughout that, throughout that first semester. And some of those students continued into the second semester. Just to give you an update on what we spent, we had spending for 2018 on the 2018 cohort in the amount of $32,241.84. And just to give you an idea of where the program rests in terms of the dollars remaining, you'll recall there was a $212,000 allocation. So three years after that $212,000 allocation, there's $141,336 and some change that has been spent. We estimate, again, these students have two and a half years to complete their course of study. We estimate with the students that are remaining in the program from the 2017 and 2018 cohorts, that we're going to spend about $31,000 or so, just based on what we see as the attrition rates and the progress of those students. So that would leave us a balance in the fund in the amount of $39,343.44. And so that's what we, at the moment, have to work with going forward.
Mr. President, if we can take a two-minute recess to change the Pac-14 tape.